Meeting in order. The board's going to have a meeting of the parent and pledge, led by Councilmember Keaton Fish.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the city of Goddard, we thank you for this Christmas season, I just pray that you would allow us to make decisions, connect it ultimately what's best for the future of this community, guide and direct us as we make those decisions. It's in your name we pray.
Okay. Approval of the agenda? So we're not approving or we're amending?
That's what we considered.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Do we, uh, do we have an approval for the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Approved by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Citizens comments. I'm D. Anybody from the audience, did they like it? Speak, whoever holds your peace.
I know, I thought you got rid of me, right?
Whoever.
So, so I know last meeting, we all approved the rezoning of 321 North Pine. Um, oh, my name's Melissa Silver, we're from Southern North Pine. Part of my biggest contention with it was that how close the duplex was gonna be to my property, and y'all explained the code and it had to be six feet from the duplex to my property line. And, um, I had a friend of mine come over today and just made a comment that he didn't think it looked like it was six feet. And I went out and measured it, and it's not. Um, and I know the minimum was a six-foot difference, or six foot between the duplex and my property line. Um, but it's not six feet, and I am going to, um, call Mr. Richards tomorrow, just let him know that his crew didn't measure it or something right. But they already poured the concrete, they've got the frame up and everything. Um, is there anything else I should do, um, other than just contact him in his office?
Uh, well, code enforcement will be through Micah. I'm not aware.
We would just work with NAVCD, so when somebody pulls a building permit, we have to use the Metropolitan Area Building Construction Department to go out, and when we submit a building permit to them, it's got the setbacks on it, the minimum setbacks as required, so six feet, six feet, twenty-five, and twenty. And so they would measure those setbacks to make sure that it's in compliance, and so we can always reach out to NAVCD and be like, hey, there's a concern about the minimum setback requirement on 321 North Pine, can we get a setback verification for that lot? And they'll go back down, double-check it. That's what probably we'll do. And if they need to cut the cement back, they'll cut the cement back, and that'd be compliant.
Okay, so you'll contact him, or should I contact him?
You're welcome to reach out to Mr. Richards, anybody's allowed to. I'll reach out to NAVCD and Mr. Richards simultaneously, and be like, hey, there's a concern about the setbacks, I need a setback verification for this lot.
Okay, so you'll go ahead and do that?
Oh, yeah, for sure, no problem.
Okay, that's it.
Anybody else?
My name is Steve Frye, I live at 2423 East Bridge Court in St. Andrews Place Edition. Um, I'm a resident, and I'm also the vice president of the HOA there. Uh, we've had several meetings where we've had discussion about the deteriorating sidewalks and potentially dangerous sections of sidewalk we have in our neighborhood. Um, we've had conflicting information given to us on whose responsibility it is, so I would like to ask the city council, uh, for help in next steps on, is that something that is a homeowner responsibility, a city responsibility, or can the HOA do something about the sidewalks?
Is Micah aware? Okay.
Yeah, so technically, the way the city code is written is that it's the responsibility of the property owner for the length of sidewalk that's on the frontage of their property. That's the way the code is written. There has been times in the past, historically, that at least that I'm aware of, where we've assisted property owners in fixing the sidewalk. More recently, when people from San Angeles have asked about sidewalk maintenance, we said this is the responsibility of the property owner, they can pick any concrete they manufacture or any type of remediation team they want to, we don't require any specific remediation team, we just ask that, once the sidewalk has been fixed and poured, that you confirm the public works that it's to their standard. Technically, the way the code is written, it is the responsibility of the property owner. If the HOA wants to take it upon themselves to remediate sidewalks and portions of the sidewalk within St. Andrews, that's well within their right, if that's what the HOA wants to do, you can pay for the property owner's sidewalk remediation in front of those properties, and just confirm the public works that's to standard they want, and then we should be good to go.
Okay, that's what we need to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
My name is Eric Brazil. I live at 419 North Oak, which is just on the side of the Oak Elementary School. Uh, I'm going to reiterate my concern I brought up to the council, probably more than a year ago, about the, uh, speed that people drive through there during the, uh, school zone.
Just print. Well, you can hear it, you're okay.
All right. But, uh, I know that the police officers have showed their presence there earlier in the year to, uh, but to me, anytime somebody sees a police officer sitting there or whatever, they're going to do what's right, and they're gonna slow down, which is great. But I think, uh, that it's, it's too, uh, convenient for people when there's not someone sitting there to allow their speed to be pretty quick, and right there were people parking from my house, which I don't mind, but it gets very narrow, 'cause people have to stop sometimes, let the other person come from the other direction, get through. But, uh, I guess my point being, what is the, uh, if the council could come out with some way of, you know, maybe having the speed reduced, I think the signs there are kind of misleading, it says twenty mile an hour, uh, during certain times, but during them other times, it's, I mean, kids are still present, 'cause I see them walk by my house all the time. So I'm just concerned about, you know, uh, during those times when, uh, people get a little lead-footed and they drive through there a little fast, so just concerned about the little ones walking around, so.
Chief, do you have any, I guess, recommendation or anything?
We'll handle it.
Okay.
You always use some spike strips.
Okay.
We'll, we'll increase our presence there and maybe utilize some people that don't stand out as much.
I would appreciate that, and I know that, I know that the teachers there on the sidewalk have hollered to people to slow down, but it's just the presence of a police officer being there makes a big, a world of difference, people being there, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. We'll just call it good on citizen comments from now on, huh? What do you think, Craig? Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? So, okay, we're moving on. Item E.
Oh, God, take the picture down. Oh, that picture's terrible, thank you. That's a terrible picture.
We're here to recognize our councilmember Sarah Leland. Um, Sarah has lived in the city of Goddard for the last twenty-one years. She's received a master's in business administration from Newman University in two thousand and three. She was the vice president and then president of the parent and, and school organization at Holy Spirit Catholic, or Catholic School for two years. She was appointed to the city council by Mayor Blue Law with the consent of the city council on top of October first, two thousand and eighteen, filling a vacant position due to the recognition, resignation of councilmember Ramirez. In the November fifth, two thousand and nineteen general election, Sarah Leland along with Hunter Larkin won the election to serve on the city council from two thou, or twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. City council, or councilmember Leland has dedicated countless service hours as a city council member and has volunteered with many organizations and community events. We want to thank councilmember Sarah Leland for her dedication to public service and present her with a plaque to honor her service, and I'm gonna turn it over to Hunter.
Well, so that's the, the formal thing, but Sarah, and I don't know if any of the other council members have anything to say, but me and you have been good friends, and, uh, you mean so much more to me than anybody else in this room knows. We've been through a lot of stuff together, and you will forever be my friend. The people here in Goddard don't know what you have done for them, but I know. Okay? And, uh, you'll always be there, and you'll always mean something to me and to Goddard, okay? So I wanna give you this, and then I'll, I want us all, all the council members and staff to take a picture of Sarah up front, okay? All right. Sarah.
They spelled my name wrong. Story of my life.
Let's go. Okay, all the staff, everybody, go.
Her name's wrong.
Sarah with a H.
Yeah. It was supposed to be a H. That's all right, we'll get her a new one.
This is story one.
Hey, we'll get it corrected.
Okay.
You want a good picture of this, are we pulling out? Where do you have the papers? Get some easy ones. Staff? Get over here. I want you over here. We're all in?
Okay, one, two, three. All right.
Thank you, sir.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pending that we make a correction. During the last city council meeting when we voted on 321 North Pine, I voted no, and in the minutes, it's reflected that I voted yes. So I'll make a motion to approve pending that correction.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item H one.
Honorable mayor and city council, this is item H one, this is the public hearing for the respread of cloverleaf and elk rage. So, quick background, due to the complexity of assessment proceedings related to the issuance of General Obligation Bond Series twenty twenty-two dash one, there is an accounting error omission that needs to be corrected. This couple of multiple lots, but with a cloverleaf subdivision requires supplemental assessment proceedings to address such error omissions and the amount of specials that are being assessed to each lot. On November sixth, twenty twenty-three, city staff presented possibly paid-down specials prior to the county sending out valid statements that it was approved. The county stated the city would not need to pay down the specials if they could receive the documentation necessary to identify which lots need to be adjusted. On November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the city council agreed to set the public hearing for the respread to the center fourth per the requirements set up by KSA twelve dash six oh eight oh one, and the respending costs follows a similar procedure to assessment specials required in public hearing followed by adoption of the ordinance, approval of imposing the ordinance. And due to notice requirement, city staff are asking for the public hearing to remain open until December eighteenth, I know actually taking on the ordinance until after the city council meeting on the eighteenth, since it allows city staff to abide by all the requirements of KSA twelve dash six oh, six A oh zero one. City council is considering approving all the necessary documents or admitting the special assessment applied to the cloverleaf and elk rage development. To be correcting the error, there's an amount of special assessments to the residents of cloverleaf, resolutions for the respread agreement is attached in Exhibit H one one A. Supplemental assessment proceedings are prescribed by statute, substantially similar to the original assessment process for the public hearing requirement. The ordinance approves and opposes the assessments, and notice assessment provides specific notice to each property owner notice of the final assessment amount to be levied on the property for the water and street improvements. The certificate of mailing provides evidence of the mailing of notices. Certified copies of the postal receipt is retained by the city clerk in accordance with Kansas State Records laws, allowing the public hearing to remain open until the conclusion of the agenda item on December eighteenth meeting. There's small cost per publication, documents have been drafted by a bond council account to give more about, and based on assessments and costs identified by city staff, instead of financial advisor Brett Short and Stephen Nichols. It's recommended that the city council both one, open the public hearing, allowing for the public hearing to remain open until December eighteenth, and concurrently allowing for the purpose of receiving written oral objections to levy the special assessments or improvements. Comments are invited, are limited to three minutes per property owner, after which we would consider the ordinance, table the ordinance until after conclusion of the agenda item on December eighteenth meeting. So that's why there's not a voice and roll call here, 'cause we're just asking that you table the ordinance until after the eighteenth meeting, and then there'd be a voice and roll call, but for the conclusion of the ordinance. At this point, if there are any comments or questions, or we would ask that the mayor go ahead and open the public hearing.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing.
Very good. Would you ask for a motion and a second for confirmation of opening of the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye.
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 Very good. At this point, Mr. Mayor, if you want, invite anybody from the audience to come up and give comment, uh, we see comments, and which are limited to three minutes, and any written or oral objections to levying of special assessments of the cloverleaf and elk rage issue.
Anybody that would like to come up and speak? Going once? Going twice? So, okay.
We do have Kevin Cowan, Gilmore Bell, and, uh, for sure, Brett Short and Stephen Nichols here, as well as city treasurer Matt Law, so if there's any questions by city council, honorable mayor, few of these individuals, feel free to ask at this time. Fox, can I say any questions? Across the process?
None.
That being said, if there are no comments or questions related to this, then I would ask that there be a motion and a second to table this ordinance until the next regular city council meeting on the eighteenth.
Do I have a motion to table?
Make a motion to table the ordinance until after the conclusion of the agenda item on the December eighteenth meeting.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed.
Are we good? This is item H, this is the IRV issuance for the Camp Bow Wow. So on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city council discussed the possibility of issuing industrial revenue bonds for Camp Bow Wow. The issuance comes to the abatement of taxes and payment of blue tax, which is called a pilot for the property question for a maximum of ten years. This couple of the sales tax waiver for the construction material of the project, application was received, and a public hearing was set for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. After conclusion of the public hearing, the city council agreed to the abatement and pilot for ten years, at ten percent modification per year to be expired by year eleven. Since Camp Bow Wow will be completed in twenty twenty-four, it will be a business to void ad lorum taxes in the first year of twenty twenty-four, the city needs to adopt the necessary resolutions and documents to allow the abatement to take effect for twenty twenty-four. So, city council is considering adopting all this, the documents drafted by the bond attorney, approved by the financial advisor, this is the pilot structure of year one being a hundred percent, and then dropping by ten percent until year eleven will be a full ad lorum. There's a maximum of ten years by statute. It's anticipated that Camp Bow Wow will receive those city revenue bonds before the end of the year, if they have not already received it, we have to follow that. Financially, small cost per publication, legally approved as a form, all documents drafted by bond council, Kevin Cowan and Gilmore Bell, reviewed by financial advisor Brett Short and Stephen Nichols, which, I don't know, actually Brett, if you want me to say, she did actually do that, I might be lying.
I'll look at it.
Okay, he looked at it. It is recommended that the city council both one, waive the reading of the ordinance with voice, and then two, approve the ordinance of the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for Camp Bow Wow, execution of all related documents pertaining to the issuance with voice, plus a roll call. But we do, once again, have, Kevin Cowan is here, he's our bond council, Matt, Matt Law, city treasurer, Ryan Peck, and Brett Short and Stephen Nichols, so if you guys do have any questions related to IRVs, issuance of industrial revenue bonds, their function, pilot programs, et cetera, feel free to ask at this time.
Kind of already audited this project. Do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. A motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds for Camp Bow Wow, and the execution of all related documents pertaining to the issuance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Frayler?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Any ordinance, nine forty-two?
Nine forty-two, thank you very much. This is item H point three, this is the Paul Norris annexation. So the city has been working with Paul Norris and Boston Company, considering annexing developing forty acres on the southwest corner of one hundred ninety-ninth and Maple. Paul Norris would like the city to annex the forty acres, after which he will go through the planning process for several acres that will be exclusively for Henry's family, with the remainder being sold to another developer. Per Kansas state law, KSA twelve five twenty-eight seven, the city can annex certain land and join the city in a writ petition for or consent to annexation filed in the city by the owner. It is probable that Henry buys the land from Mr. Norris, is going on a split of single family duplexes to spread the cost of improvements on the land. Planning permission, city council can consider this when the land is sold. At this point, the city council is agree, had, is agreeing to the annexation, that will prove an ordinance formally annexed to the property to the corporate city limits of the city. The city clerk will notify all necessary parties of the annexation, which would include the county, and et cetera, all, all affected parties. Once annexed, the default zoning is R one, single-family residential. So for future rezoning, they would have to go through the planning commission and then come to the city council on a later date. At this point, the default's gonna stay R one, and they're gonna go through the planning process if the city council is in favor of the annexation. City council is considering approving an ordinance annexing certain property to the corporate city limits of Goddard, it's thirty-nine point six seven nine acres, one million seven hundred twenty-eight thousand three ninety-eight square feet, southwest corner of one hundred ninety-ninth and Maple, it's currently unplanted, so they're definitely gonna have to go through the planning process. Default's R one, authority under KSA twelve five twenty-eight seven. Here's the property in question, these are forty acres. This blue here, this is our, the contiguous city limits of the city of Goddard. So you can see that we stop right here on that tree row, and this is one ninety-ninth and Maple, and Maple or Sixth Street, some people refer to it as, so this would be the forty acres, that would be annexed. We currently have a water line that runs up the east side of one ninety-nine, so it'll be easy access to water. Sewer is something that would have to be under consideration with engineering. Small complication fee for the ordinance, approved as a form, annexation ordinance is approved by Robert Corkywell on Morris Lane. Since it is an ordinance, I do request for a waive in the reading of the ordinance, and then second to approve the ordinance annexing certain land to the corporate city limits, with that notice, plus roll call. Any questions or comments related to this?
This is just to get the property into the city, and then the city will negotiate with the developer, and zoning, and plat, and everything else, but...
That's right, so Mr. Norris wants like five, somewhere between five and eight acres for himself personally, because it's just gonna be large houses on large lots, that's for Henry's family. The remaining acreage, whatever that looks like, thirty-two, thirty-five, or whatever, is probably gonna be sold to a developer who's generally, one of the ones I've talked to in relating, in relation to this development, would want a split, would duplexes and single family. Now, that being said, the default is R one, so if they did do a split, generally speaking, they're probably gonna have to go through an R two rezoning for the whole property, which means that you guys are gonna see that after it's reviewed by planning permission per any other rezoning requirement. But right now, the default's R one, and they want it R one, so there's no change in terms of the zoning.
And the landowner has come to the city and has just...
That's right, this is a petition, that's what makes it easy. If it wasn't a petition, if you were unilaterally annexing somebody, that'd be a different requirement, it's under statute. Right now, we're invoking KSA twelve five twenty-eight seven, which means that he's petitioned, and it is a body in the city, so those are two different markets under A seven. The petition for annexation is in, exhibited in your...
I can make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance. Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance annexing certain land into the corporate city limits.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Frayler?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Orderance, nine forty-three.
Nine forty-three, thank you very much. This is item H point four, this is a Withrow annexation.
British building.
The city has been working with Mark and Christina Withrow to annex sixteen point six acres located on the north side of US fifty-four, across from the Dills Distribution Center. Mark and Christina Withrow would like the city to annex the sixteen point six acres, after which they go through the plating process and work with the Kansas Department of Transportation for access control into US fifty-four. Per state law, KSA twelve five twenty-eight seven, the city can annex certain land and join the city in a writ petition for consent to annexations filed in the city by the owner. Mark Withrow has, has mentioned turning the sixteen-plus acres into an RV park that traveling best in the area. The city currently does not have a really good zoning classification for RV parks, and as such, either a new zoning classification may need to be made, or it'll have to be a special use application, so that's something that we have to take into account. Planning permission, city council can consider this at a later point in the future. Once annexed, the default zoning is R one, single-family residential detached. At this point, the city council agrees to the annexation, that approving ordinance formally annexing property to the city limits of the city clerk will notify all necessary parties of the annexation. City council is considering approving an ordinance annexing certain properties to the corporate city limits of Goddard, sixteen point six one zero acres, seven hundred twenty-three thousand five thirty-five square feet, it's a northwest corner of US fifty-four and two fifteen. It's currently unplanted, so they'd have to go through plating process, default's R one, and authority comes on a KSA twelve five twenty-eight seven, similar to the last one. This is the property in question. So as you see here, this is the Dills Distribution Warehouse, this is US fifty-four, this is two fifteen. This is a sewer line that we have currently, and it's running north-south on two fifteen, this is a water that we have on US fifty-four, and it's also heading down towards the Goddard Trails End development as well. Right now, this would just be for the annexing, as mentioned, they have to go through plating, which would require stormwater review, and also all engineering that's related to demo Financially, there's a small complication fee for the ordinance, legally approved as a form, annexation ordinance approved by Robert Corkywell on Morris Lane. It's recommended city council both one, waive the reading of the ordinance, and then two, approve the ordinance annexing certain land to the corporate city limits with voice, plus a roll call. But have any questions, comments on this? We do have Harley Ford, a city engineer here, Craig Cross, a new city administrator, any questions related to this? Questions related to future zoning, possibly for an RV park, what that would look like? We'd have to kind of review that, there's certainly some possibilities. Right now, the default's R one, so we would have to go through a formal rezoning process in the future, which would have to get published in the Times Sentinel, allowing twenty days to lapse prior to the public hearing before plating commissions in the council, just like any other rezoning requirement.
I got no problem with that, I think that the council, future council, needs to make sure that they, uh, do a zoning for RV parks, I think that's important on how you classify it, so, but I have no problem bringing it down, bringing them in.
You need a truck stop.
Do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the ordinance annexing certain land into the corporate city limits.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Frayler?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Eight one nine, forty-five.
Nine forty-five, thank you very much. Nine forty-four?
Yeah, it should be forty-four.
Oh, nine forty.
Because forty-three was...
Forty-four, you're correct.
Thank you.
Are we gonna do your report?[1785.62] Are we going to do your report?
Yeah, I can do that real quick.
I didn't, I didn't add it, did I? I forgot.
That's my fault. You asked about it earlier and I was thinking you were talking about the minutes thing.
Oh, okay. All right. No, we'll do a City Administrator report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, it's good to see you this evening. Thank you for being here. So I got a brief update on some of the operations over the last couple of weeks I want to share with the governing body, some things that are coming up and some project updates. We will have the audit report presentation at either the January 15th or February 5th council meeting. That'll be the 2022 audit report. On the North Park design and project management, staff's putting together a request for proposal, whereas we'll be seeking an architectural firm to do the design, project management and seek stakeholder input so we can get the ball rolling on that project. We'll probably bring that to you at the next meeting in December or the first meeting in January. That'll kind of kick things off for that project so we can get a little momentum behind us on it. The 183rd Turn Lanes Project, staff has been working with Trans Systems and the City Engineer on updating the access management construction project application, just a little bit of red tape to keep things progressing there. We expect that we'll have that application updated and submitted to KDOT this week so we can continue proceeding. Third-party city engineering on-call requests for proposals. As we've discussed here a multitude of times, just with our rapid growth, we've got a lot of projects coming out of the pie again. Discussion with Harland, our City Engineer, we'd like to seek a third-party on-call engineering consultant for project-specific needs. Not to say Harland wouldn't still play an integral role in those projects, but we'd like to get another engineering firm that we can work with on one-off projects, whether it be the cross-connection for the rural water district, the stormwater assessment, our water pressure model update, and there's a couple others that I'm not thinking of that we may look at having some other firms do. We just want to keep progress occurring and also give a, you know, kind of a safety release valve for Harland's team who is very busy right now because of all the wonderful things happening here. On the rural water district number four, cross-connection agreement, City Attorney Robert Coquelinol informed us that the legal counsel for RWD4 will have us a draft agreement tomorrow. That's good news. We will work with our legal team and our civil engineering consultant to make sure that that agreement is good to go before we deliver it to the governing body, so some progress there. Again, we're considering soliciting a third party to help with the design and the inspection when the actual project occurs for that cross-connection, help us secure our water future for the next several years. Community Garden, last week, staff being Public Works Director Brooke Brandonberg, he worked with the city attorneys, he's going to be working with the city attorney's office to draft the MOU with the Lions Club for the community garden. I believe he had some discussion with the club last week at the contents of that MOU, so as soon as we get that executed with them, we can go ahead and progress on that project. Community Center, if you've seen some activity going on out front, they've been working diligently daily since early last week, still shooting for a late winter. We'll call it a ribbon-cutting affair for that project. We're super excited that they're over there working. KDHEE Ramp Grant Program, essentially there's, as part of the, bipartisan infrastructure law, I don't want to say trillion, but that seems too much, but it was a lot of money that the president is putting out there for different infrastructure projects. Some of that could be useful to our community as we look at our North Park development, as well as the off-discussed pedestrian overpass. So, there is no match required and you can get several million dollars. I think the word 10 million was thrown around during our discussion this last week, and so we're going to submit a project narrative application to KDHEE on the 15th. And should we have, good luck with that, then we will come back to the governing body to seek your input and approval for a formal grant application to go after one or the other or maybe both of those projects. Brooke and I were pretty excited about our conversation and some of the possibilities there, so. Community Development, some of this is, some of the projects that are coming out of the pie that'll be coming before you guys, Mike had provided me with this update. Goddard City Center, we received the final plat, which will go to the planning commission this week on the 11th, then it'll come to you guys on the 18th, the second edition of the Goddard City Center. That final plat will also go to them on the 11th and then back to you guys on the 18th, 23rd South Edition. The Mylar, which is the nice fancy piece of paper that all the important people sign, that'll be coming for the 23rd South Edition, as well as petitions we project by the end of the year. Same for Rustic Creek when it comes to the petitions, we expect to see those for Phase Two by the end of the year, as well as Goddard Trails in Phase Two. So, we're seeing a lot of progress amongst the winter months, which is nice to see, so. Also, I wanted to give you a brief update on the R-Cut projects. The contractor is currently within schedule in spite of the weather we've been dealing with. They're going to be paving the eastbound mainline this Wednesday. It'll be around 1,800 cubic yards of concrete, which is a lot. They're also working on median improvements, will be doing most of that for the next couple of months. They have all the storm sewer improvements completed and they've graded the ditches on the south side of US 54, if you've noticed that driving by. Couple of the private franchises in the rideaway are currently relocating their existing utilities in the south ditch that are conflicting with the project boundary. And then grading between US 54 and the south frontage road is complete with one-half of the payment completed. Underground borings for traffic signals and conduit are also nearly complete, so they're really humming along there. We are currently in Phase Two of construction. Traffic will switch to Phase Three, construction on the north side of US 54 by early February. So, likely we will have Trans Systems provide us and the community a map just to remind them what that Phase Three traffic control plan looks like, so everyone's aware of what to expect when they get out to the road. Lastly, I just wanted to thank Madam Vice Mayor Leland for your service. I remember when I was here five, six years ago, when you were appointed to your position and kind of glad to get across paths with you again, at least for a few weeks, as you're getting ready to sail off into the sunset. Thank you for your year's service. I also want to thank Sarah Simon, our community care clerk, who has decorated the front side of City Hall. I thought we had the best design. When chamber allocation comes up next year, we might have to discuss that. With that, I'll see you in my time and I appreciate you for letting me come share some updates with you guys.
Thank you, Craig.
Keaton?
Well, first and foremost, doesn't it feel good to have a City Administrator doing this job as well as he's doing it? Craig, this last weekend, I'm going to brag about you for a second, went up, were you in Kansas City, is that correct? And was graduated from a program. He spent some time, was it a year? Sorry, I want to make sure I'm getting the numbers right. Spent the last year just getting more training and becoming better at what he does, and then we snuck in and scooped him out of Sterling and we're taking credit for him. But, so congratulations and thank you for your dedication and doing your job so well. It is very refreshing to have a City Administrator, so congrats on that. Sarah, congratulations, you made it. Wish you the best of luck. Yeah, yeah. We've been through some pretty tense meetings and you were a sounding board. When I first got in here and got some punches thrown at me, you were a very strong sounding board and I appreciate your guidance and learning how this game works, so congrats. Thanks for everything you did for Goddard and we wish you the best. That's it.
Sarah?
Oh, wow. So I said I was disgusting. I don't have anything to say, but it's, it's been a crazy five years, five-plus years. I've seen a lot of good things, a lot of good things. The last year especially, we've done so much and I feel like I can leave knowing that I did good. I mean, between, when I first came on, we were talking about the North Park. Brent was on council. We were talking about the North Park and getting a North Park built and I'm glad to see it's back on the agendas, back in the City Administrator's report. I'm glad to see Craig is back, that you don't know how much better I sleep at night knowing that you're back. And that our staff is equipped to do their jobs and they will be supported in doing their jobs. And that I feel like the City of Goddard voted right. I feel like the council that's coming in is going to take very good care of you guys. I just, I mean, there's so many things, the Starbahn, I dug a hole. I held the shovel, that's the Starbahn groundbreaking. And it's done and it's, or, you know, it's, so that's something between the community center and the library getting refurbished, that's just, I feel like, yeah, I just, I feel like I did something good and that's something to take with me, I guess, so. Good luck to you guys who are all still going to be here. I'll toast to you next meeting from Miami in Jamaica with my rum punch and yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you, Sarah. Everybody, let's give a round of applause. Aubrey?
Yeah. Love that you're here, you know, the work you've been doing the past couple of weeks stands out. And so, appreciate the phone calls and everything that you're doing, all this staff, you guys are doing phenomenal. Sarah, you know, so thanks for your guidance. Thanks for your support. You know, when we came in here, you know, by you, by you leaving your seat, we're losing a ton of tribal knowledge. Right? So, I mean, really, I mean, that's, that's something, that's a very, you know, sitting on this, this bench as long as you have, there's a lot of things that, that, you know, you've helped us out with understanding. You kind of lose history a little bit.
I'll come remind you.
But anyway, just thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for all the support and congratulations and send me a bottle of rum punch.
Yeah. I can only bring so much back through testicles.
Brooke?
Is that, I think it's for what, $11 a bottle?
I don't even know. I need, I need to look. And then, my son's only 20 and so he can't bring back anything for me. He's not legal.
You know, I don't remember. I mean, because I started going when I was 18.
He can drink there, but he can't bring it back to the U.S.
But no, we were able to, you know, it's kind of weird, as we were down in Brownsburg, we were able to bring it back with us across, we were under 21.
You probably haven't been.
Huh?
Nothing.
We're going to break some brown robe on, man. Anyway, yeah, thank you, Sarah, for the time served and I promise I won't honk if I go by your house.
Don't wake up the puppy.
Had a good time over the weekend. I went Mitten Tree shopping, man, it was so much fun! Yep.
Oh, Mitten Tree, I thought you said mint tree. And I'm like, what's a, what's a Mitten?
Mitten, Mitten Tree, right? Yeah, yeah. Yep. Yep, I got four boys, so I have all the little, the T, four Ts and this and that, you know, and yeah, that was an experience, learning where the little boy's section was to the big boy's section, you know? My boy's 20, so, you know, I didn't have, you know, so. Anyway, had a good time doing that. All I got to do is get a football, that's all I have left to buy.
Well, Angie, you did a great job. Christmas on Main Street was a success. A lot of people showed up, it was drizzling, but it was still a great event, still a great event. And, huh?
You had a good team.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes. How many people showed up, do we think, do we know?
I guess it's about 1,500.
That's really good. That's really good. I'm starting to get more choked up on my last speeches, you know, leaving. I even got a little choked up at the, at the end of the Christmas tree lighting, but you did a great job, so I just want to let you know that. Amanda, you're doing an amazing job. So, I got to tell you, Brent, I just wrote Amanda a check and she did all the shopping for me. I told her, I said, I said, I told her.
That would have been easy.
That's what she offered at the store when she came in, she goes, "How many Mitten do you want? I'll just go shopping."
I, I said, "I don't know where in the hell they get all this stuff," so...
How'd you, how'd you get away with it?
I, it's the privileges of being mayor. No, it's because she's the best. She knows what she's doing. So, we've got great community members that are helping out so much. And then Sarah, I don't, I don't know what else to say more. I mean, I think you know me and my love for you so much, so, I mean, me and you are not going anywhere, so. All right, well, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Oh, oh, we have, we have an executive session. I don't want to, we have two of them.
I did have one other thing I forgot to say, it was on my list and then I completely spaced it. One thing that I've seen in the past five years is our community event growth and it's been amazing and the work, the teamwork between our teams and the city, it's just, it speaks volumes to see the growth in those events and I do appreciate you guys and all you do. Okay.
Yep, we have two executive sessions tonight. One exec, one exec session for personal matters of non-elected personnel.
10 minutes.
10 minutes? Is that, is that good? Do I have a motion?
Motion to recess into an executive session in order to discuss matters involving city employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters exception KSA 75-4319B1. The City Council will convene the open meeting in the City Council chambers at 7:56 PM.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
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 We do have, we do have another executive session, but I'm going to have to ask all of the people, it's going to be a bigger one where we're going to need all of our staff and bond counsel and everybody, so we're going to have to kick everybody out of the room because we're going to use this room, but you're more than welcome to come back if you want to after, but I'm going to kick you out in the hall and then, and if you want to come back, you can, so.
I was going to say, after.
Yeah, yep. Oh, yeah, no, no, you're good.
I was going to say after, but I can't.
Make, make work and move and we can break the off.
Yeah. Sorry. It's just.
You have to scoot down.
We can't touch the L. Thank you for your ready.
Are you staying? Are you staying? I don't care, either way. Yeah.
Can we, can we raffle basket for a story, take you?
Okay.
I make a motion to recess into executive session for consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged, an attorney-client relationship, KSA 75-43192. The city council will convene the open meeting in city council chambers at eight fifteen.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that there is no binding action taken during executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.